Before we call the meeting to order, we are going to move item number eight to item number five. So, we're going to move item number eight to item number five. So, with that, we will call this meeting to order. Our first item on our agenda is public comment. If there's anyone wanting to address, please do so when you have three minutes.
How you doing, everybody? I'm Dee Jones. First of all, I want to say it's no place for violence in America. I wish there was this always continuous peace. I know there's some countries that don't have any violence, and I wish America was one of those countries that didn't have violence. That's not the case here. I wanted to speak to you guys about a couple of things. So, I developed the Youth Justice Influence League, an esports league that I developed in partnership with Seventeenth Circuit Court. Our season is going to start today, so we're going to be doing the season today gaming. And I'm very excited because at the end of this initiative, we're going to bring kids from Kent County on probation and surveillance to the Detroit Lions forward field, and we're going to check out the forward field. We're going to go through the forward field. That's going to be super cool. I'm excited to do that because I drove past. I've been in Detroit a lot, but I've never actually got to go inside the forward field. So, to bring kids there, I hope it broadens their horizons, and they think of bigger things. And me helping GRPS invest a couple hundred thousand dollars into esports and infrastructure, I'm very excited about these initiatives because I can actually help guide these students to careers in esports teams where they can actually compete and earn college scholarships and be able to go get an education and hopefully a career and a job where they can get out of poverty. I also wanted to thank a woman named Jen Peacock. She's the Director of our State Center for Youth Justice, and she contacted me about getting involved in a project where the work that I've been doing in Kent County can actually help with research that other states can use to actually get rid of the fees and the court fines for juveniles. So, the cool things I did, just being passionate and being genuine and authentic, is doing some beautiful things that can actually help policy and influence statewide policies in other states. I'm no politician, but I'm very conscious of how politics work, and I think some of the stuff that I do is as good as politicians. Sometimes I feel like I do better work than politicians. But I'm no person to compare my work. I'm just going to keep doing what I do, and I know it's going to influence society. I'm very excited about these things that I'm doing because I've been genuine. I can show kids that, you know, eventually you could be a star or star in a production or co-producer production and be a vice president of esports energy drink and have those things here. Or help KDL start esports, and then now they're a part of a conference of Michigan High School's Esports Federation where there's over 400 schools across our state in this league, and I got an esports competition with Epic Games, and I'm doing a Fortnite competition. I mean, these things are very powerful. I'm going to be a billionaire one day, y'all, for sure. I think I'm going to change, help change some policies. I think that both parties on both sides of the aisle, I think they'll like the work that I'm doing because it's only going to help society and not just one party, but everyone. Because that's all I ever wanted to do is just change society and maybe speak to the United Nations one day. Imagine Dee Jones speaking to the United Nations.
Is there anyone else that would be wanting to address the LHR Committee? I guess the real question for Dee Jones is if you had a college scholarship today, and it was difference between basketball and esports, which one you would take? See, look, I'm speechless. That's the first time in almost four years.
I'd probably have to do basketball.
I love it. Thank you, Dee Jones. All right. See, no one else that would address the committee? We need a motion for the last meeting's minutes. Motion by Legrand, supported by Teal. Any comments, questions? If not, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes. All those with a no, there is none. All right. Next item on our agenda, we have our federal legislative update. Steve and Charlie, I don't know if we have one. Both of them are on here, so if you could go ahead and give us the updates in Washington, that'd be fabulous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish we were in my hometown. I can assure you, it's going to be 101 degrees here. So, I miss Michigan. Thank you for having us. At this time, we are in the middle of the appropriation season. That is the season where we actually have to pass the bills for the next fiscal year, which starts October 1. The House has been moving very aggressively to pass their bills off the floor before August recess. The Senate, which is typically slower, is far behind. And as I've indicated to your staff fairly recently, that it's a given that the House and Senate will not pass all twelve appropriations bills, but will in fact have to pass what we call a continuing resolution, which funds government from October 1, which is the beginning of the fiscal year, into sometime probably, pardon me, in December. That way, they can assess the November elections and determine the route that they would like to go. There are a lot of variables based on what could happen in November, who has control of the chambers, who has control of the White House, and that would determine also whether they punt those bills into the next calendar year when the new White House or if Biden is reelected, but the new House and the new Senate would be sworn in. Too many variables to go into. However, if somebody would like to talk to me about that, I'm happy to do that. My point of contact is readily available, and you can either talk to Josh or Lori and get that information. Happy to get into that. That said, on the House side, they did pass the fiscal year 25 appropriations bills for the T-HUD Transportation Housing Urban Development Appropriations Bill, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague about the projects that were listed in that bill for Kent County.
Steve, excuse me. Several projects of importance are in the Transportation HUD bill. We can give you a full list of everything impacting the county. But just to give you an idea, with the Grand River Greenway Trail is included. That was submitted by both Senators and Congresswoman Sculton. That's for $2 million. There's also the Convention Arena Authority Grant with the Grand River Neighborhood Enhancement and Accessibility Bridge. That's another major funding opportunity for Kent County. And finally, there's some funding in there for construction of outdoor therapy center for victims of sexual abuse in Michigan. That's also part of the Transportation HUD bill and some other economic development initiatives.
I'd like everybody to remember that there's been an ongoing issue about what we commonly refer to as earmarks, the congressionally-directed spending programs that were cut for 10 years and then re-implemented just a few years ago. So, it gave Congress more of an ability to direct that spending. That if, again, we punt, if you will, if Congress punts into December and then into next year, we're not sure if those programs that Charlie just mentioned will in fact get funded. There will be a more hearty debate on whether or not to give Congress that ability. Moving on just a little bit, just to give you a perspective about things that will impact the county, let's be honest and candid. We don't know what's going to happen in Michigan. We don't know what's going to happen in the House and Senate. We don't know who our member of Congress will be or our president. But that will impact our ability to navigate Capitol Hill. It will have an impact on all counties, not just Kent County. But a few of the other issues that are under consideration by Congress that they really hope to pass before the end of this calendar year, unrelated to spending, is the Workforce Development Act. I would like Charlie to comment on that and what the implications are for the county.
Sure. Thank you. One of the major authorization bills that is currently being considered in Congress is a reauthorization, reauthorization of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, RIOA. And the purpose of that is to expand the skills development provided under current law. It also strengthens relationships between employers and the workforce system that is often put in place at the state level. It allows more Americans to get the training they need to get to upskill their careers. This bill was last authorized in 2014. On April 9, the House passed its version of the bill called the Stronger Workforce for America Act. And it's important to note that the Senate has yet to pass its version of the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act. The Chairman of the Senate Health Education Labor and Pensions Committee has released a discussion draft, that sort of initial draft of the bill that hasn't been passed through committee yet. The purpose of that is to get comment from interested parties, and that is expected to be marked up in committee perhaps this summer. And this is something that is long overdue for reauthorization. Last year, Congress tried to pass a bill. A bill was passed in the House, but it was not passed by the Senate, so they're trying again this year. The challenge, of course, is that we're about to enter into August recess, in which Congress will shut down on August 2 until September. They've only got three more weeks in September to pass anything before they adjourn for the presidential congressional elections, of course, coming up on November 5. So, that's...
All right. Let me elaborate on that just a bit because it's not just the workforce development bill that would be impacted by the congressional calendar. It's also the disaster supplemental. There will be a disaster supplemental appropriations bill that would impact probably very well. Many, all states for a variety of reasons, they need to replenish FEMA's coffers for wildfires, hurricanes, tornadoes, and so forth, and perhaps some supplemental funding for border security.
Yep.
And so, there's, you know, all of this spending legislation, including the appropriations, to Charlie's point, is we're in a very consolidated calendar, and it is because it's an election year. It's such a pivotal election year. Given the tenor and the vitriol, I think that there's a great likelihood that they're going to pass just enough to get by until the November elections. So, to Charlie's point, there's only about another week that they get back and maybe a week and a half to get business done before August recess. Then they're gone in August. They come back for a few weeks in September, and then they're probably going to want to campaign through October. There will be a few days that there will be votes and so forth, but there just won't be much business done. And when there is business, it will probably be mostly bills of, you know, just to project action rather than substance. There is one thing, though, that I would like to put on everybody's radar. The massive surface transportation bill, which is an authorization, not an appropriation, that expires in fiscal year 26. And I am certain that your colleagues across the country are starting to calculate, evaluate their needs for this next surface transportation bill. This is the bill that funds road construction, bridges, highways, you know, country roads, rural roads, et cetera, and it's a massive bill. The previous administration made two attempts and were unable to pass anything, but the Biden administration was able to pass with Congress a bill from '22 to '26. Let's hope that whoever's in the White House can usher through another bill because the wear and tear on our roads, I don't need to tell you, you're on the front lines, but I would suggest that you start thinking about that. When you do that, it allows us to start driving that pump to allow the two Senators and the area members of Congress, in this case, Sculton, Heisinga, and of course Congressman Molinar, to start telling them about those projects that you're going to want to see funded in that next package. So, with that, we've covered a lot. We could go into more detail. I'm happy to answer any questions or defer to my direct boss, Lori and Josh, if they would like me to take calls at a later date.
All right. Commissioners, some comments or questions? Commissioner Bujak.
Thank you, Chair. Steve, just wanted to thank you for the legislative update, and I wanted to comment about the clock you have on the wall there. Great clock.
Love it. It's my hometown. Thank you.
Yeah. So, make sure you get Charlie one for Christmas. Thanks.
Steve, I was actually curious, too. I was going to comment on that, and Al and I were talking. Now, do you have a stack of those? And whoever you're talking to, you just put a new clock on there or a new...
Just ever leaves the wall.
Okay. All right.
Ever leaves the wall. And I will tell you that I get a lot of congressional traffic here. Every one of, most of our, well, every member of our delegation has been here. They see it when they come here, whether it's Congressman Heisinga, the two Senators, Congresswoman Sculton, Congressman Molinar, they all see it. Very proud.
That's fantastic. Commissioner Hennessy. I'm not going to let her off the hook. I mean, she, a couple of years ago, she goes, she keeps on telling me, all right, we got to have these updates. So, I just call on her without her even asking now.
I am pleased. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
This has really been an informative, packed report with information. The airport did not come up in terms of...
You're right. It should have. We should have raised that. That is something that another group covers, but the airport, I will get you that funding level. But both the House and Senate have been very good to the airport. That is not something that we're directly tasked with doing, but we do provide support when we see the delegation. But there is another group that's integrally involved. And so, Commissioner, we'll get you those numbers, but I will send those to you with caution that, again, Congress has to finish the job. They have to pass these bills in order for the airport to receive that funding. But they have in fact gotten funding through the fiscal year 25 process.
That caution is certainly well taken by me. I appreciate hearing that, and I think that it will inform us in terms of our next steps and how we, you know, work to make sure that some of these issues are handled before it becomes too late in terms of electioneering.
Well, since you opened the door, Commissioner, I would like to add for 30 seconds, there's a lot of misinformation about congressionally-directed spending. There's a few facts that get thrown under the blanket, if you will. One is they added zero to the deficit, zero, because Congress first has to pass its budget allocation. Those congressionally-directed spending programs, not only earmarks, earmarks, aren't above that budget allocations. They're contained within that budget allocation. So, there's not a dime beyond what Congress would end up spending at the end of the day. What they do, though, is they direct the spending instead of allowing federal agencies to direct that spending. So, I would maintain that the funding that Kent County receives through this process is funding that they would not otherwise receive. And to me, it's a democratization of the funding program.
Stephen, may I add something about what's still pending in the current appropriations process for the airport?
Yeah. If you've got it, please, Chair. Thank you, Charlie.
I know that still pending is a request for $63 million for the air traffic control tower at the airport to construct a new air traffic control tower. That's pending in the current FY25 Transportation Appropriations Bill. There's also a request for a ticket counter relocation or construction of a ticket counter at the airport as part of a terminal enhancement project. So, those are some of the projects that we're monitoring that are part of the current FY25 appropriation process. And I think that, as Steve mentioned, the Senate is only starting to start their process. They only passed a few bills out of committee, and that was done last week. So, we're expecting to get more information on what's in those bills in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Let me cap that off by saying, Commissioners and staff, if there's anything in Kent County that isn't something that's a county government function, but you need a little more advocacy, we're happy to do it. My advocacy doesn't begin or end with a contract. It really is, I can't tell you the amount of gratitude I have to be able to, you know, provide enhancements and benefits to my, you know, fellow Kent Countyans and Grand Riverites.
Thank you.
Please call me.
Wonderful. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to go back to that Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And can we, you said it hasn't been, I took some quick notes here, it hasn't been reauthorized since 2014. And I think you said, maybe you said it went through the House but not the Senate yet. I just, I serve on the asset board, so I'm wondering if that workforce development money does not flow through to the state. Is that going to be affecting our West Michigan works? And what sort of timeline would that be on, if so?
Charlie? Yeah. I think that's a great question. I think it would be best that I look into that and maybe follow up with you, but these are bills that need to be reauthorized every five years, so they get extended, I believe, and that would impact, because I know there are a lot of reforms that are necessary. But perhaps I could get back to you with a little more detail if that would help. And again, I can't stress more that this bill needs to be reauthorized, but they've had some problems getting it through Congress. This happens every five years. The implications, you know, all depends on what is in the final bill and how it impacts Western Michigan.
If I could, Commissioner, let me summarize that funding doesn't stop at the end of the authorization, and Charlie alluded to this. The current formula of any federal program that ends is continued. But the problem with that is it's under a formula that was created years and years ago. There could have been a number of different factors that, you know, need to be considered to modify dollars that flow, whether through states, whether directly to county governments and so forth. So, it will not end. It just needs to be reconfigured. I recall being, when I was a Senate staffer, the Older Americans Act had expired for, I want to say, 10 years. And, but it continued to get funding. It's just that it was a stale formula. I hope that answers your question. But we will look into the relationship with Michigan Works. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. It does, yeah.
Okay, great.
Just wanted to add real quick. The Farm Bill is another example of a major authorization bill. That's a $1.5 trillion bill. That was last authorized in 2018. It should have been reauthorized last year. It was extended until September 30 of 2024. So, they had until September 30 to reauthorize the Farm Bill. Otherwise, they'll have to extend that bill again until September 30 of 2025. So, that's another example that we wanted to mention, that of a major authorization bill that affects Kent County and every county.
Thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioners? I really appreciate the update, of course. Again, you did mention that airport tower. The airport is our number one economic driver in West Michigan and Kent County. So, they're moving that tower near that FedEx building that's currently there. Only allows the airport to continue its growth, to continue its economic expansion into West Michigan, and it's vitally important to our community's success. So, again, something that's near and dear to most of us and a lot of us here. So, again, we really appreciate your hard work. And again, I think we have great representation in Congress with our three congresspeople that definitely advocate for it. Obviously, Senator Stabenow, hopefully, you know, this could be her swan song, helping us get this funding over the hump there, and Senator Peters, too. So, again, we do appreciate all of their efforts on helping make that a reality. So, again, seeing no other Commissioners, we again appreciate your report, and we'll probably see you next quarter.
It's a pleasure. Thank you for all that you do.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is the Michigan State University Extension. This is our annual update. Scott. Just a quick grab of water, but go ahead and set up and...
Morning, everyone. Well set? Let me wait another moment or two, or are we good to go? All right. Nothing like a federal update to remind me of the Serenity Prayer. Wow. Well, it's a real privilege for me to be here this morning and to share a little quick update about Michigan State University Extension. I've been in this role since the end of November, and what I've learned is, is that, boy, there is just an amazing amount of resource and skill and ability that we have and that people need to know more about it. And so, this is an opportunity for me today to share some of that. And to do so, not so much just in the numbers. I mean, the annual report is on our website, and I can certainly get paper copies to Lisa if you'd like that. All the numbers are in there. But really, what I think this comes down to is people. And so, that's really where I want to start and where I want to focus, because I think you can have great resources and great ideas, but it really comes down to the people. And about making sure that those people are all in tune with the same goal, which for Michigan State is, extension is to help people improve their lives by bringing the vast knowledge, resources of MSU directly to individuals, communities, and businesses. And that is the focus. So, there are just a couple of numbers here. The numbers, I get a little competitive here, so I'm hopeful that a year from now, I'm confident that we'll have some higher numbers for some of these, although it's fairly impressive anyways. But we are making an impact in the context that we have. But we are making an impact in the context that we have. You may not know this, well, I'm sure that you already do, but Michigan, in Michigan, Kent is a number-one county in fruits, tree nuts and berries, and it's number-two in nursery, greenhouses, and floriculture, which is pretty impressive. It's a big economic driver for us. And here are some of the people that are behind that, that support our growers. Janah Headland, who just recently joined us, is an expert, an amazingly intelligent horticulture educator. Lindsay Brown, who's just been on the job for about a year, who is getting rave reviews from the ridge because of her activities in support of apple growers. And then you probably know Rebecca Finerin, because she is a force of nature, although just retired, but yet, because of what she's done with the Grand Ideas Garden, Michigan State University Extension is keeping her on as the curator of the garden. And as we talk about this, it'll be in your packet, and I used to be a seventh-grade science teacher, so I'm not giving you the resources, the handouts yet. You can get those afterwards from Lisa. Lisa's fantastic, by the way, I already know you know that, in keeping things organized. But the flyer here, if you haven't seen it already, we've got three walks scheduled at the gig, inviting Kent County employees to come join us and walk through the Grand Ideas Garden during lunchtime, so that they can see the garden and so that they can experience it. It's good for the heart, the soul. Time and nature, we know, is really important, and appreciate the teamwork with Al and others to make this a possibility and to make this an option for Kent County employees. The one thing that has to be remembered is even though an educator may not be housed in Kent County, they're still a resource to all of you. And so here are some of the people that are actually housed in Ottawa, but who have responsibilities here in Kent County as well. So Heidi Lindberg, who does greenhouse and nursery education and also research. And then Charles Gold. Charles is just always so fascinating, and I just really enjoy talking with him. This first person, I mean, I grew up on a small farm, but I didn't know that there was actually manure management educators. But when you think about that, it's really important, especially, it's particularly important when we think about our water and our streams. And also, Charles is really fantastic, and really becoming a leader in the state and regionally, in how, when we have solar and hundreds of acres of solar, that you can still do agriculture, goats and sheep and pollinators, and it doesn't have to be one or the other. There's really ways to combine those two. And so we don't take a stance in whether it should be there or should not, but if the solar energy is there, there are options to make it really much more agriculturally friendly. Martine Manuel is our dairy herd educator. I believe Kent is number-three in the state, or number-four in the state for dairy herds. And then Dr. Carlos Salazar for our small fruit educators. And these are people that are always available, and one of the real privileges I have is when there's a question, I get to make that connection for all of you or for people in Kent County to these folks. Looking at the United States Census Bureau, one of the things that, you know, we know about agriculture and 4H, but there is a lot of other resources that Extension provides. And when we think about Kent County, there's, you know, fifteen-point-four percent of the population's over the age of sixty-five. Over eleven percent of the population is Hispanic or Latino. And ten-point-seven percent of our population in Kent County lives in poverty. And Michigan State University Extension has these people as your resources to the county providing programming. And in this packet that you'll get later, you will see the number of opportunities and the classes that are taught. So Georgina is just really brilliant and does a lot for having classes for caregivers. We know, and I'm in that situation myself, of supporting elderly parents, and we know that caregiving can really be quite taxing. And so there are courses on that. There's courses on alternatives to anger and relaxation. Jennifer Ortquist does programming on home buying and financial management, being an informed renter, all of these programs that are available, and most without any cost, or if there is a low cost, there's still funds there to support scholarships. And then, really, Adriana Ramirez, one of our bright young stars who's just started, who's all focused, her forge programming is for our Spanish-speaking youth. And what she is doing already is really quite incredible. And I want you to see these faces, because I want you to remember those faces, remember what they are doing, because it is really, truly, the people that make the difference. And, you know, speaking of people, and we know that the challenges that we have with mental health, and we, through Extension and through resources, we've got mental health first aid courses, both for teens and for adults, and that information's in your packet as well. Lastly, I don't know if you've had the smash seasonings yet, but one of the things that I've learned that really isn't well-known is about the Product Center for Michigan State Extension, and the amazing ability that they have to work with folks to start their own businesses. And so I was at the conference in April, and I met Tony Zack, he's a Kent County resident. It's over in the Kennewah Hills area, where they make the popcorn seasonings. Just a brilliant guy, had just really gotten tired of the corporate life, and through a set of circumstances, started making seasonings. And, man, I tell you, it's really good. And if you happen to get, you know, a seasoning sometime in the next week or so, you'll remember Tony Zack and the business that he was able to start because of his association with the Michigan State University Extension Product Center, which is really, really exciting to see, people being able to give the opportunity and the assistance to do that. So, I had a minute left, I'm feeling pretty good about that. Any questions?
I love it. Fantastic. Great. Thank you, Scott. Commissioners? Commissioner Bujak?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for being here this morning with the update. Truth be told, I'm a U of M dad, so, but very supportive of the MSU Extension. I had the opportunity to go to our Fire Commission meetings, which are held there at the MSU Extension. And while there, I was wandering around the MSU Extension building, and surprised to see your kiosk there, showing all the various programs and opportunities, you know, to share with the citizens in Kent County. So very much appreciate what your guys are doing there, and the effort by everyone involved in the MSU Extension, and encourage you to continue the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I think I have to hold down the fort for this side of the table today.
We could have put you over there.
I'm really interested that you have added, you know, an expert to try and grow the 4H programs with the Spanish language, and I'd like to know more about, you know, what you are doing. We know about farming, our land-grant university, we know about the farming interest, but how we're growing our young people and involving them in...
Yeah, one of the things that 4H programming has done is that they've started spin classes, and those spin classes are not just a club, like you would think, that usually are associated with agriculture, but the spin classes are more focused in on topics that are relevant to today's student, wherever they live and what they have interest in. So we have now a full set of four 4H program coordinators that are working quite a bit with Greenwich Public Schools in developing a lot of after-school courses, and these spin classes that can be on cooking, that can be on coding, that can be on art and design, all of which we know are part of critical thinking skills. And you'll have some information in the packet with Adriana about some of the specific focuses she has for Spanish-speaking youth as well.
These are after-school programs?
Some of them are after-school, some of them, that's the, so, I've not developed yet my elevator speech, and I'm still working on that, and part of it is, is that the elevator ride isn't long enough. Because forge programming really can go in so many different ways and in so many different opportunities, and so much of it's dependent upon the partner that we work with and what the students are interested in. But I would be glad to provide, we have twenty-seven clubs right now, and those are not the spin classes, but I will be glad to provide that information so that you have a better representation of what our young people here in Kent County are learning.
I think that's really good. I mean, we associate a lot of the Extension programs as being more rural, and to hear that you're coming in and serving urban youth and growing them in their perspectives is really, it's really very interesting. I'm pleased you're doing it. We're coming up, to continue on this line, we're coming up on 4H season, Fair season.
Yes.
And what your role will be and what the role of the youth, again, will be as we have the Kent County Fair.
Yeah, yeah, we've had a few meetings with John Scott, who now is the president of the Michigan Fair and Something Something Association. And with the Kent County Youth Fair, we'll have, participate in some of the activities there. I know that there is an ice cream social that we do, we'll have a table in our resources, giveaways, we'll have people, our 4H program coordinators and myself, will be there every day, and we're providing an additional support for whatever else the fair needs. So we're really looking forward to that, participating in all the safety drills and planning as well. So we're looking forward to a great experience here coming up the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner LaGrand?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question, the Product Center, this is the second time now that I've heard about that. I'm wondering, particularly with the programs in Spanish, whether there's an effort to connect with, like, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce or some of those other, like, small business groups?
Yeah, we're members with the West Michigan Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, great.
So we do every opportunity we can, and, you know, particularly, I mean, with Spanish-speaking, we're translating a lot of our resources into Spanish to make those more available. So, yeah, it's a definite focus.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Again, really appreciate your time here. Again, I think as a few of us become a little more seasoned, again, to remember the, seasoned with the popcorns, like that one, that was, you know, but the product development's absolutely fantastic, again, the 4H that you mentioned as well, expanding, you know, these young people that are doing 4H, and they're really kind of forced to speak to adults and ask them for money and, you know, buy their products. It's a very worthwhile organization, and you helping in that and expanding that to different people are very much appreciated. So, again, good work, again, appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right. So our next item on our agenda, remember, we are moving, we moved number eight to number five, and this is brought to us by the Board, our Board Office. It's the Area Agency on Aging of West Michigan. This is the Fiscal Year 2025 Annual Implementation Plan. And Sherri Harris is here to give us a brief overview.
Is that Scott, you know, tried to rattle off, and we could add another, we can add a couple more, and two O's in there, too, if we wanted to, and your acronym.
We can, yes. So, good morning, everyone. I'm Kendra Kindlin, I'm the CEO at the Area Agency on Aging. Good to see everyone again. I'm joined by Sherri Harris, our Director of Advocacy and Planning. I was a late add to the agenda once I heard about the meeting, I asked Sherri if I could join, so appreciate to be here with everyone. Want to touch a little bit on our Older American Act Annual Implementation Plan. So our Older American Act outside of our Kent County Senior Milage Funding is what helps us support the other nine counties that we serve. So what this does is this funnels into our, what we call an MYP, or a multi-year plan. So every three years, we fill out a multi-year plan. Within that, we have an annual implementation plan where we look to provide updates on that multi-year plan, which is what you see here before you today. Just as a footnote, when we're in front of you next year, we are going into a multi-year planning season, so that really does allow us the flexibility to be able to bring on new services, bring in, look at new partners, gap-filling services, so on and so forth. For a few things here, I know it is a long plan, but a few things I want to highlight. One of our primary focuses this year are looking at housing and how we can be more impactful in our housing partnerships, not only within Kent County, but throughout the other eight counties that we serve as well. So we are going to prioritize bringing on one new housing partnership. What that looks like, whether that's direct service, whether that's looking at providing that wraparound care. When we talk to different organizations throughout our service region, we often find one of the biggest barriers to building actually brick and mortar and getting those units set up is providing that 24/7 care. So we think we're not necessarily going to be a factor in that brick and mortar function of it, but we do think we can play a role in looking at that support and how we can provide that onsite support, whether that's through our contracted partners or with our staff directly. We are going to also be looking at building our brand awareness, so creating a return on investment. One often thing we say is, when we talk about the Area Agency on Aging, we spend the first half of the meeting talking about the Area Agency on Aging, and trying to educate people on what that is, what is it we do, and what services we provide, also highlighting our partners and our network that we work with. So with that, we want to see, what is that impact? What is the impact of us going out and staffing these tabling events? What is the impact of us being at different expos, mailers, online social media posts? So we're going to create a return on investment for that initiative to make sure that we're reaching intentionally out to those that we serve and that they are getting the information they need. So if we're going to be doing a push on housing, our call center should see an increase in housing, and we should be able to track that to say, okay, that's working. Or it's not working, so we need to adapt to make sure, whether it needs to be a mailer, whether it needs to be individual emails, so on and so forth, or a group presentation. Want to be more intentional about our, not only our staff's time, but reaching out about our services and the impact of those services as well. We also are creating a new database on the background to help us streamline our processes as far as our reporting goes. So we go through a monthly reporting process, not only for the Kent County Senior Milage, but for the Older American Act services as well. And we want to create more intentional reports, so we're able to more closely identify our spending levels, be able to see where our funding's at, but then also use that to inform not only legislators, but those that we serve, what the impact of the dollars are. So whether it's federal, state, local taxpayer, grants, we want to be able to produce monthly reports to send back to show the impact of these services, and then also show the impact of those that we're serving. We are going to be increasing as well with our educational events and expos, want to make sure that we're serving those underserved and marginalized communities, so there's a great push at our agency as far as DEI initiatives go. We also want to, as well, have a bigger impact on the legislative needs that we see throughout the areas that we serve. So when I hear the legislative update today, you know, Sherri and I are talking, for those of you who are not aware, there's a large cut coming for meals, sixteen-point-five million that was just announced last week. So what that means is Sherri and myself and our partner network is we need to advocate to show what are those meal cuts looking like, not only for our region, but for the entire United States as well, and what is the impact of those meals. It's really not just a meal, it might be the only time that person's seen throughout the week. Might be the only time they have social interaction if they're going to a congregate setting. So looking at how we can be more impactful with our advocacy, I'm happy to say, one of our advocacy pushes in our plan this year, the three-million-dollar request for the long-term care ombudsman to the state, so far, looking like that is going to be approved. What that does is add thirty-three new long-term care ombudsmen for the state of Michigan, for our region, so Kent included. That's two-and-a-half long-term care ombudsmen. So currently, we have two-and-a-half long-term care ombudsmen, that gets our census up to five at the agency. And what those long-term care ombudsmen do is they are the voice for those in facilities. So long-term skilled facilities, adult foster cares, home for the age, they go in, they provide that oversight, they are person-centered, so they advocate, whether it's meals, care, call lights, and put together a care plan and work with those agencies throughout our region. We have over eighty skilled units in Kent County alone, so I do not need to tell you the impact of those extra staff members to be able to provide that wraparound care for those in those facilities. So we are excited about that. But we have a long way to go. As we find out about that, we then find out about meals. So it is an ever-ending battle to make sure that older adults and those with disabilities are getting the services that they need. I know that's a high... I know that's a high-level overview for a long summary, but are there any questions I can ask that were not covered or that you have about the plan in general?
All right, thank you. Yeah, we were just talking about some of your comments that you were making, some reminders for Al and I or for myself. Commissioner Boujak.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for the services that you provide for the elderly. Certainly very important as we have society that appears to be growing older every day. We have quite a few baby boomers now that are in that category of elderly that need assistance and care. So certainly an important program. In the news was the federal cuts to the Meals on Wheels. I know for one that I will be contacting my congressman to assure that he hears the voice of this county commissioner about my displeasure in that cut at the federal level. And I know that we here at the county will do everything we can to try to continue the funding that we can provide to your agency, and we certainly support what you're doing.
Appreciate the advocacy.
Commissioner Baker.
First, I want to thank my elderly colleague for his comments. I, you know, I think that the Mills program is really, I think, key. It's to some extent, I think of the Area Agency, if this body knows that there's a concern, I mean, Mills is something that the broader community can help with. And so I think that it's, it would be great to know that as these things happen, so that way we can hear from you. Because I look at you guys as the voice of that group and what, you know, what their needs are, so just want to remind you to do that.
All right, Commissioner LaGrande.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to get back to the question of your branding and making people aware, and I'm wondering if you have specific ideas of which, you know, I don't know, segments of the population might not be aware of you and how you might go about that. I know that when I was knocking doors last election cycle, I talked to people who were like, oh, they were, you know, dealing with an elderly mother trying to help her stay in her home, and they didn't have a great awareness of what was available. And so just wondering if you could talk just a little bit more about that.
Yeah, so directly towards that point, as we look right now, our best information is, okay, we can track down to the area code zip code for where people are reaching out about our services. So we try to see, okay, what segments each year are we, I would say, underserving? Which segments do we see in activity? So when we look at essentially a heat map for our services for our nine-county region, it produces those gaps to where we need to reach out, and we do reach out to organizations that either we currently partner with or are not partnering with, that are part of those communities, whether it's marginalized communities or just communities that we're underserving. So that's how we go about putting together that marketing plan, so to speak, for those areas.
Great. I also just really wanted to, to thank you for your initiative and supporting the housing question about not getting into the brick and mortar, but being able to maybe enter in and do that supportive piece, which really makes the housing so much, which makes it usable, which makes it doable. So that sounds like a great idea, and I look forward to hearing more about that as it unfolds.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I appreciate that the Area Agency continues to really get in and delve into reassessing what its priorities are and how to serve people. And I appreciate what Commissioner LaGrande said about the branding. One of the things I'm finding is many times people don't know how to access the services. And of course, you can call the United Way, you can call the Area Agency Office and get that help. But I think that's one of the things, you know, I was with a neighbor the other day and she said, "Look at my next-door neighbor," she says, "she needs help with that part of her house." Well, we have home repair services. It's things, but how to, you know, it is still a matter of making people aware that these services are out there and they're for them and can be relatively easily accessed. So I think that that is important. One of the things that was done this year, instead of having the annual meeting, instead of being a lunch in a closed-in room and a prepared program, it was an expo-type of event. It was in the parking lot. There was hundreds, I can't remember if it was three fifty, four hundred and fifty people who came to that program. So it became that much more of an outreach type of activity. And so I do think that that's another example of the way in which the Area Agency continues to look at and reassess what are the needs and how do we get there. And one of the sentences that struck me in this is that, you know, the whole goal is to prolong seniors' ability to live independently within their communities, to live in the setting where they prefer to be, and whether it be within their own home or with a family member, and there is supports offered to family members in many ways, or to be in, you know, some sort of an assisted-type living facility. Which brings me, the ombudsman program is really, really important, and those people are very overworked for the monitoring activity they do have in terms of watching how people... As I look at this report, it's actually fairly complex because the programs themselves are complex and delving into many ways in which we live our lives, from mowing our lawns and shoveling our driveways, to the medications assistance, to getting to the transportation, to get to the doctor's appointments, to getting the food. We actually have a program that helps after you've been hospitalized and are still on your home, but you're unable to really prepare those foods and the meals for you. We actually have a program that will follow up on the hospital care and help provide that. One of our food programs actually provides a grocery store-type experience, the Community Food Club. It's varied and it really is, it's a very dynamic program that constantly, through its contract delivery and through its services and the help, the way in which the staff is deployed, looks to make sure that the money is spent as it should be and looking at the accountability for the entire system and that the people who need to be reached are, have the best chance of being reached. Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy. All right, any other, Commissioner Baker?
Sorry, one more time, but to follow up on Commissioner Hennessy's point, so what, how would her neighbor that needs help with this home know about Area Agency? I mean, I run into folks that feel like they need to figure out how to use a computer before they can figure out how to access services, so.
So my initial response would be, the best would be to contact us. How would they know they need to contact us? I hope would come to...
How would anyone exist to contact you?
That's the golden question there. That is why we are trying to, you'll notice this year, we took, as a weakness on our SWOT analysis, is the best kept secret, because we don't even want to promote that anymore. We want to make sure that we are outreach-ing. So there's a few different, we, you know, we have radio, TV, print, partner networks. So when I hear about things like Kent County Community Action or different partners, I would hope that they would either connect with them and they connect them back to us, community members, so community resources, grassroots, as far as I would hope Commissioner Hennessy recommended to our neighbor to call our agency. But outside of that, we really are looking at media pushes, monthly newsletters, getting more active on social media, because we might not be talking to the client that has, doesn't have technology, but a caregiver, somebody that knows that client's going to see that information and hopefully make that referral to us. We're also trying to, I would say, uncomplicate our programs. So getting very, you know, instead of talking about home chore services and how can you connect to those, we say, "Talk about lawn mowing and snow removal," because most people don't associate home chore with those services. So we're trying to break out those different categories to make sure it's more intentional. So instead of, you know, revive and thrive that was mentioned, we say medically tailored meals. That rings a bell more with people than, we know what we're talking about, we know the acronym, but the general public does not. So we're trying to be more simplistic in our language when we're talking about and highlighting these programs.
Yep. All right, any other commissioners? Commissioner Boujak.
Thank you, Chair. One more comeback. I just contacted my congressman. Done.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, any other commissioner comments, questions? I guess I got a few things, again, Kendrick, Sherri, again, appreciate you both being here. When it comes to marketing and reaching folks, I'm just curious, I don't know if there's staffs out there, who do you see contacting you? Is it, is it a parent or a son or daughter contacting you typically about their parent more than the, you know, elderly parent calling you? What do you, what do you find on that?
So our typical call volume goes from the caregiver, from the direct client, we have a lot of calls, and then also I would say a provider. So whether that's a healthcare professional, a facility liaison or administrator, it really does range that wide variety of our typical calls that we get.
So reaching out to folks like Wally's kids or folks like my age are probably appropriate with trying to find people?
Yep.
And then my next question would be, when it comes to housing, Commissioner Hennessy made that point of, you know, we're trying to age either in place, we're trying to age in our community where we live. Do we have any tools where perhaps we have a widow, widower that would like a roommate, where there's some background checks, one, somebody coming in that can only afford so many dollars, but it also helps the one living in that house? Do we have like a, not a house share program, but is there something out there that, that does exist?
So there was a push by Grand Valley State, it's called intergenerational housing. So essentially, it would be a roommate structure that goes through those background checks for somebody looking to either live with an older adult or an older adult live with them, vice versa. Did not pick up a lot of steam, but it is something we are looking at to see how that can go. Our major hurdle was access, people being aware about it, and then comfortability of that background check and making sure that it's already a vulnerable population. We want to make sure we weren't creating avenues for that vulnerability to be taken advantage of. So that is something we're looking at reviving, and still have a long way to go though to get that up and running.
All right. Again, I apologize, Al and I were just talking a little bit about, Commissioner Hennessy?
I was involved with that program a few years ago, and I think it will be revived again, and I think, and it did have some startup money granted through the Area Agency, and it continued for a few, I think we were ahead of our time. And I think that this is a need we're going to continue to see, and I think that there will just be more buzz about it, some more knowledge and more acceptance. What we found was that there weren't the homes available that would open up for other people. There were people who did want to participate in the program. And I think it was ahead of its time, they're doing it in some places, I think Ann Arbor has a program, but it'll come around again.
All right, good, thank you.
The time is right.
You bet. So yeah, again, apologize, when you were speaking, it was a reminder to me that I heard the same thing on Wood Radio this morning about the funds that are not going to be coming to like Meals on Wheels. Obviously, that impacts our community. Al mentioned that he heard that on Wood TV last night. So I did, I did ask Al that if we can have staff look at an action request or we can look at some more details about that and potentially add that as a legislative priority. So we'll see some things coming from staff on that and we can discuss that as a, as a committee.
We'd appreciate the support.
Commissioner Boujak.
Question for you, Chair. Do we need to take action on this, make a motion to accept the report or anything?
Yes, yeah, actually, we do. I didn't get a motion and support on that, thank you. I was kind of, yeah, we got a move by, and supported by Boujak. No, I appreciate it. This will move to our meeting this coming Thursday. So if all in favor, please say yes. Yes, all opposed, that has passed. Again, thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, everyone.
Another great report, again, appreciate that. Obviously, it'll be a little longer today, trying to consolidate our meetings from two to one, so it might go a little longer on a few of these, but it'll definitely free up staff time and our time on particular Tuesdays. All right, our next item on our agenda is brought to us by the Administrator's Office. This is the Kent County Draft Opioid Settlement Spending Plan for Years One and Two. Do I have a motion, please? Motion by LaGrande, supported by Teal. All right, commissioners, comments, questions? Commissioner Boujak.
Thank you, Chair. Comments and questions this morning? In reviewing these materials, tremendous, tremendous amount of materials that were provided to us, and I'm not sure who's on this committee and who's put together all this information, but it's very, very, very complicated, and I certainly appreciate, you know, all the effort that's been put into this and the elements of providing education to our schools and young people about the dangers of opioids. And I really appreciate this program and I'm definitely in support of it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy.
I know that we were involved in a couple of sessions to learn more about the development of the plan, a long time ago, actually, almost a year ago at this point. And so I know there's been a lot of work going into it. One of the things I did question was the lack of money for transportation in these first two years, because I think that transportation getting to and from for the population that we're going to be serving, you know, is going to be an important issue.
There we have, I think, two folks here that can probably help us with a little of that information.
I'd first like to thank the opioid task force. Many of the members are, a few of the members are here with us today and are happy to answer questions as well, and they're an incredible resource for Kent County. Their experience and expertise across the members is fantastic. So on transportation, it was identified as a high priority and is included in the plan as something to continue researching. Right now, we don't have a good solution, so we wanted to learn more about what other communities are doing to address the transportation need and also monitor what Kent County's Mobility Task Force is looking at to see what we can learn from there. We definitely want to address it, we just don't have something we can turn on right now to fund and use to serve the population. There was a mention of bus vouchers, that is something we can look at. The majority of the challenge is in our more rural areas that don't have access to the bus system, so that's part of the challenge.
All right, I'll go to you again. I think you're brewing a question, so I'll...
I'm not sure what my question is, but I'm just, you know, thinking about how creative, how creative have we been in approaching this problem, whether it be, you know, using Ubers, bus systems, you know, seeing if you can buy in and use the transportation system we have set up through the Area Agency on Aging. I'm just, I'm just, I see transportation as being a strong need, as you've said, and I'm just wondering, you know, how creative we've been in really approaching. I think that this is a good plan, it's a good first two years, and it'll be interesting to see the emphasis on people who are incarcerated. I think that'll be really interesting to see how that works out and what the, you know, the success rate, if you want to call it success rates, but you know, what, you know, what the impact will be, the impact will be on that. I appreciate the work that has gone into this, though. This is very comprehensive and a good start for the first two years.
Commissioner LaGrande, I believe, had a question.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank you, Jenny, I know you've been working super hard at this and the, and the task force. It's, it's great to have the money, it's depressing to have the money and to be dealing with this huge problem, but it's, it's good to feel like we're doing something about it. And thank you for the extra information we got on, on the expansion of medically assisted treatment at the jail. And I'm kind of wondering what, maybe someone from the sheriff can answer this question, but, and perhaps I missed it, but in terms of that warm handoff piece, and I know that with, with the MAT, the transportation is always, you know, a huge thing, but is there, what is our warm handoff from the jail in terms of people who are experiencing that program and then have to access it once they are back in the community?
Yeah, I'll invite the sheriff's office, and I also invite any of our other task force members who want to speak about transportation, and please do, please do so.
From the warm handoff piece of the jail, currently, we have recovery coaches that work inside the facility that coordinate with those that are currently in the program, and they facilitate appointments and that handoff process with the community, wherever they're stationed for their appointments or have to go. They start that process while they're in the facility with those recovery coaches during the time that they're receiving treatment.
Yeah, absolutely. And in addition to that, we also have methadone programming starting while they're in there. So they're actually receiving community-based treatment while in custody, so that when they get out, they're able to continue that, don't have to start a new treatment program, they're going to see the same providers. So we're able to do that via telehealth while they're in there, so they can get ongoing therapy, ongoing medical appointments. So there's... So there's continuity of care post-release. And we've seen really good outcomes from those started continuing in care in the community.
Would you be willing to introduce yourself too, you're on the task force?
Yeah, absolutely. Jason Storm, I'm the clinical manager with Cherry Health.
All right, just want to put name and face and again, recognition of a job well done.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other Commissioners' comments or questions? Again, Jenny and the task force, thanks for all the hard work. I think there's some moving pieces that will change as it goes on and address some transportation and type concerns. But again, good step forward. All right, seeing no other questions, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, all those opposed, that will move to Thursday's board meeting. All right, next item on our agenda, this is brought to us again by the Administrator's Office, the capital improvement program policy. Do I have a motion, please? Motion by Legrand, supported by DeBoer, thank you so much. All right, Commissioners, comments, questions? All right, Commissioner Teal.
Yeah, I was just curious, how long the policy has had the part where we had to have $25,000 for approval by the board and now we're moving it to 100,000? How long has that been our policy? Why are we increasing it? And then about how many of those $25,000 transfer approvals do we do per year?
All right. Jeff has all this on the top of his head, he knows all the answers.
Morning Commissioners, I don't know the exact date, but it's been in place for a really long time. I've been here just about five years, so it's been there. And I'd have to go back and look at the specific date it was put in place. But I think we've probably done since I've been here, on average, I would guess five to six per year of transfers. And most of them are under 100,000. So we just thought this would give us a little more flexibility with the cost increases. And it wasn't a magic number of 100,000, it was just a number with inflation and everything else that's gone on with our capital program over the years. We thought it was a good point to put it at, so.
Great, typically what's the checks and balances on this, just so if someone could answer?
Yeah, they require the administrator approval. Once we determine a project is underfunded and we find funds available in another project, we'll bring that. It'll come forward to finance and then we'll talk to the administrator for approval on that, so.
Okay. Wonderful. All right, any other comments or questions? Commissioner Hennessy?
I'm curious, you said five to six, you know, changes a year would come under this type of policy. Can you give me an example of how that would be implemented?
I think the latest one we had was just last week and it was the parking lot change over at the Fuller complex, I think was a recent one, where we moved money between capital projects to fund the changes in that scope. That was the most recent one.
The word here is used in case of an emergency, so what, did that fall under the idea of an emergency change?
This is, these are not typically emergency changes. These are typically where a project is over budget and we need to transfer funds and we have funds available in another project. And the limit's always been under 25,000, we could just do it administratively. So we're looking to move that amount up a bit, so we don't have to bring those back to the finance committee as often.
Okay, just so I understand this, that this, you're, you're, you know, these are all projects that are already budgeted in some way?
Previously approved, exactly. Previously projects, one's over, one's under, so we'll move money between them.
Okay, it's not to create a new project?
Correct.
That would, you know, not be on the capital improvement program list?
Existing projects, one's over, we have money available in another one, previously under 25, we would just do it administratively. This is just moving that limit up to 100.
Thank you.
And of course, this is also with, the board chair is consulted by the county administrator on this. So I'm assuming that if the board chair says no, the county administrator would most likely say no as well. I guess you could always say it's a consult and still approve it, but I'm not sure that would be the route he would go.
Yeah, right, correct.
So there is some checks and balances on there, so people have to answer ultimately to the full board. All right, if there's no other comments or questions, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, all those opposed, that will move to our board meeting on Thursday. All right, next item on our agenda, number eight, Administrator's Office, West Michigan Regional Planning Commission membership. Do I have a motion, please? Motion by Legrand, supported by Bujak. Love it. All right, Commissioners, any comments, questions or concerns? Commissioner Hennessy?
Why are we joining this organization at this point? It's interesting because we used to, I used to receive as a commissioner many of their minutes and haven't seen anything in recent years. I'm not sure what they do or, you know, we belong to the Grand Valley Metro Council and said that was sufficient, we didn't need to belong to this group. I mean, my general question is why?
I think we're rejoining the group, actually. I think at one point historically, we might have been a member. The main reason though is the US Economic Development Agency, EDA, money all flows through this group. So they, they're the ones that manage all the applications. I think in many areas of the county, our income demographics would suggest that we're not eligible for some of those funds, but there are areas of the county that are. And so that really, that's one of the main thing is that in order to align, to be eligible for that funding from the feds, we would have to be part of this group.
Okay, so it becomes, it opens up an avenue for seeking grant funding, if you will.
We do have the director here this morning and I do have a question for you, if you'd like to.
Yes, I'd be happy to fill you in a little bit.
At one time, I think you folks were also kind of the funnel for natural resources trust fund?
Well, we're, well, my name's Dave B., I'm the director of the Regional Planning Commission. The trust fund, we help a lot with the recreation plans for communities, which is one of the requirements. And they have to send the recreation plans to us. We don't have any yea or nay vote on it, but it's just a way of tracking things. There's a lot of things like that that come to us, even when, without membership in the Regional Planning Commission. And especially since the county doesn't have a planning commission, a lot of things come through us instead of the county planning commission. Things like land use plans and zoning ordinances and farmland preservation, the recreation plans, things like that come through us anyway. And I was just appointed to the Materials Management Committee for the county and I don't know how many meetings that's going to require.
Twenty.
I know. And I have eight counties, so a little bit about the Regional Planning Commission, if that'd be all right?
Sure.
Okay, we're one of 14 regional planning commissions. And this will get back to our relationship with the Metro Council as well. One of 14 regional planning commissions across the state. We cover eight counties. One of the smaller regional planning commissions as far as staff and budget goes, but one of the larger ones as far as population goes. We have a staff of 2.6 people. So we have a budget that's usually around 250, 280,000 dollars a year. We're funded by the US Department of Commerce's Economic Development Administration and MDOT. And then also dues from our members is required because we have to have a match for our Economic Development Administration program. So EDA or Economic Development Administration requires that we have matches coming from the local government so that there's, you know, buy-in into the program. And it's not just another program that is coming from high. We focus on trying to get EDA grants for communities and they're not glamorous grants. They're things for water and sewer and roads and things like that that are absolutely, you know, necessary for our communities. But they're not headline grabbers. Actually, the last time we were in the newspaper was when Mayor Logi was retiring and the comment went something like, and Mayor Logi served on less glamorous boards like the Employee Compensation Board and the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission. I'm like, that's how we get in the newspaper? Our other, our other big program and our biggest funder is the Michigan Department of Transportation. So we work a lot with MDOT, but we work more in the rural areas. We do work with two communities in Kent County, but the Metro Council is the metropolitan planning organization which focuses on transportation. So they focus on the more urban side of transportation. And I'm up driving around Macosta County's roads and things like that. About 30 years ago, we were, we, the Regional Planning Commission was the Regional Planning Commission and we were the MPO, but the Metro Council was formed and sort of divvied up responsibilities. The Metro Council took the rural side of things and, or, we took the rural side of things and they focused on the MPO transportation piece. I wasn't, I wasn't here then, I've only been here 25 years. And, you know, and most of the people that were around then are gone. So it's kind of ancient history, but it was a little bit of, I think, I think there were a lot of, a lot more politics involved than we're used to. We're a very behind the scenes kind of organization. We don't, you know, you don't see us out there beating our own drum. Anyway. Membership is a voluntary piece of the Regional Planning Commission. It would involve a resolution, it would involve designating three representatives from the county, two public sector and then one private sector, which can be education, it can be a chamber member, it can be a manufacturer, anybody who, you know, you think would be a good fit. And that one's kind of a tough one. Most of our board members on our board are county representatives. We do have a couple of communities, cities and villages, well, cities that are members as well. Grand Rapids as a whole is a member and Cedar Springs is a member. But most of our board members are county commissioners, some county administrators or community development type people. Our offices are on North Monroe, in between Anne and Leonard, in the old Cooper's Landing building. I don't know how many of you know where that is. Anybody know where Tillman's used to be? That was just north of there. So our offices are there, very easy to get to. Again, not a, not a high-profile building, one of those places that you drive past 100 times and not notice. I live in Grand Rapids, I live a mile away from the office, so there's that. Also, I want to let you know, I might be a little fuzzy today. I had 20 hours of travel yesterday, I got back from Denmark at 11:30 last night, so I'm a little, a little out of it. More than usual. Also, Linda Howe is a good resource for what the Regional Planning Commission's about. She was on our, served on our board for many, many years through Elegant County and her role there. But she was also, you know, she would bring us information about Kent County as well.
All right, any other Commissioners' comments or questions? Al had a, okay, well, I'm going to have Al just clarify a couple of things first, Commissioner, and.
The action request says that there's a total cost of zero and then include it in budget. So I just wanted to clarify that it's $9,000 is the cost to participate, but it is in the proposed budget for next year.
That's the dues.
That's the dues for Kent County, correct.
All right, Commissioner Legrand, I don't know if that answered the question, but I wanted to have Al.
Uh, well, that's, I've got more than one.
Perfect.
Okay, so thank you for explaining the difference between Grand Valley Metro Council and it's, I was going to ask.
Usually people also ask, what about the right place? But they're more the private sector.
Yeah, right, no, that makes sense to me. One question I have, like, are you able to answer, like, what is your return on investment? We've got a $285,000 budget, you said, that's supported by dues. So like, how many, how much money in grants do you bring in for this area with that sort of a?
Well, we have good years and bad years, I'll put it that way. And typically, an EDA grant is about two and a half million dollars, so. I, I use, for our smaller counties, dues is based on per capita, so, you know, Osceola County's dues are, I don't know, $700 or something. And for them, if they get a two and a half million dollar grant, it's a, you know, you're covered for 400 years, although people don't have that kind of memory. Grand Rapids has had four EDA grants over the years, probably close to, I don't know, $8 million. Seward Avenue on the other side of the river, a couple over there, the Michigan Street Hill, one was there. And then back 50 years ago, again, before my time, barely, was the DeVos Performing Hall, not the, not DeVos Hall, the.
Sure, so we're talking big return, huge return on investment?
Yeah, and.
Yeah, which is, that's, I just kind of was looking for scale, so that's very helpful.
So, and our dues are the lowest in the state for all the regional planning commissions. They're based on per capita, but then we also have a ceiling in place. So the Ottawa Counties and the Kent Counties and Grand Rapids bump up against that ceiling. They're the only ones that hit that ceiling.
Okay, and then my other question would just be like, how much staff time are we looking at for folding this into?
I don't think much.
Five meetings a year.
Yeah, and then we would recommend that a Commissioner is in one of those seats, certainly, so, yeah.
Thank you.
The meetings are held across the region, so it might be a drive to Osceola County one time or across the hallway to Grand Rapids another time.
Okay, any other Commissioners' comments or questions? If not, then again, this will go to the full board this coming Thursday. Again, seeing no other questions, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, all those opposed, that will go to full board on Thursday.
Thank you.
All right, any Commissioner miscellaneous or staff? Commissioner Bujak?
Thank you, Chair. Given the political situation we all experienced this past weekend with the assassination attempt on our former President Donald Trump, I'm compelled to comment, as all political leaders have, that there is no place for violence in political campaigns and that we need to find ways to settle our differences at the ballot box and do that peacefully. And for the families affected by the tragedy, certainly have prayers for the families that are mourning and those who are injured, also hoping they have a speedy recovery, including the former President Donald Trump. And I'm hoping that this extraordinarily political divisiveness that we're experiencing is given an opportunity from this event to pause and reflect and find ways to put our political differences aside. We're not Democrats, we're not Republicans, we're Americans. And we need to pull together as Americans and find a way to be more united in the way that we proceed politically in these campaigns. And I'm hoping that they find a way to ratchet down the political rhetoric and the divisiveness in these campaigns and that we can continue and find ways to be more unified. I know that here at Kent County, we as Commissioners, Republicans, Democrats, have worked collaboratively and 99% of the things that we do here at Kent County are not, not politically divisive. So we've found ways to work together and I'm just hoping that, you know, at the higher levels of government, they can look to the counties to see what we're doing and find ways to act like we do in a civil manner and find ways to settle our differences at the ballot box, not with guns and violence, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bujak. Any other Commissioner miscellaneous? All right, seeing none, again, I'd just like to thank Lori for, again, setting up the legislative update. Again, Carol mentioned this to me a couple of years ago, that we kind of get on. on a little bit more of a routine on that, kind of went away from that. So we've had some, you know, between going to Land Scene and our, our state update by Becky, and then today, again, I think that's been very helpful and obviously to get our agenda out there and what our priorities are and what's important to Kent County. So that is very important. It's nice to see things, again, thanks for all the presentation. It's just kind of a reminder, the longer that we're here, starting to get some institutional knowledge of everything that our county does have to offer because there is a lot of help that's out there for our community. It's just finding it in the right place. So again, thanks for all those individuals today. Thanks for the opioid, opioid, opioid task force for, again, coming together. You know, it's a heavy lift, right? It's a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of time away from work to, to set that up and move that forward. So again, thank you for your hard work there. And again, seeing nothing else, this meeting's adjourned. We'll see you Thursday.